Ready to go?
Hold on, hold on one second. Okay, you're good to go.
Okay. I'd like to call this meeting a town council order on August 13th, 2020. Welcome, everybody. Again, I wish we were in person, but gonna make the best of it that we can. So AC, you want to go through the, through the rules, I guess?
All right. So as always, I have to go through the formality of establishing the authority to conduct the meetings electronically. Town council members and town staff are going to be participating using the Zoom conference platform. Meetings being streamed for public viewing on Tana Timberill's YouTube channel. And the authority for the town council to meet this in this manner was established on May 26, 2020 through the declaration of local emergency, the resolution authorizing the electronic public meetings and the emergency ordinance to address continuity of operations. And as you can see, they're all in effect for six months from the date of adoption. All the required notifications were sent out and any votes taken tonight will be conducted by roll call and will be recorded in the minutes.
Okay. Thank you, AC. Everyone, make sure you have, we added a police report on the agenda we had. We haven't heard from JR for a little while. We make sure we know what's going on in the police department. So I added a little slot for him to be able to tell us what's going on with his group. We'll start, as we always do, with the approval of the minutes. Everybody got a copy of the minutes with their email? I'm hoping everyone had a chance to review them. Do you have any questions or corrections or anything like that? Now is the time to bring that forward. If not, we need a motion.
Fair. If there's no corrections or questions, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
A motion by Carl. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, that was Natalie.
Yes.
Okay. All those, any further discussion? All those? Yeah, okay, go ahead, Ned.
At the last sentence of the minutes was a word, was a grammatical correction I asked to be made. Changing the word seen, S-E-E-N, to S-C-E-N-E.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. Okay, we have a motion and a second, and we have that correction. I'm assuming no one has a problem with the grammatical change. All those in favor? I guess I'll go through roll call, I have to do. Carl?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yes.
Ned?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
And Juanita? Okay. Thank you, Anita. Let's see. Everyone received a copy of their treasure report and a copy of the money spent so far on the park improvement. Anybody have any questions for a treasure on any of those items? Okay. Seeing none or hearing none, we'll keep on moving. Now we have bills for payment. You received a copy of your bills? Any questions for AC or Chief or Melinda on any of the expenses incurred and bills being paid in August? Okay. If not, well, as usual, we need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Carl? Here with Carl. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor will go through the list. Carl?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
And Anita?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, AC. Before we get to the police report, I think you had a, we got your public works report and you had a couple of other small things to talk about. Is that correct?
I do. So a few of the other projects going on around town. If you came up Main Street today, you might have noticed across from Ned's house that BDOT was doing some work on the sidewalk there. There was a drainage cut in the sidewalk that had, had a metal plate over, had that metal plate over it for years and years and years. It started bowing and became a tripping hazard. We requested BDOT to fix that, that plate or to do something about that situation so somebody wouldn't trip on it. And so they started working on it today. I'm not exactly sure. I was originally told that they were going to do another plate for across it. But they had torn up, looked like two sections of sidewalk and had it framed up to pour new concrete in. So I'm not exactly sure what the final product's going to look like. But it should be, it should definitely be an improvement. The, just a quick update on the Lone Pine Drive waterline project. Now that's kind of been dragging on. The contractor's been out there. Chris told me, I checked with him and said the contractor's been out there chipping through rock. So they hit some rock and that's what's kind of slowed things down. Chris said the contractor's supposed to be back out. The plan is for him to be back out on Monday and said, Chris thinks that they're out of the rock now and so it should go pretty smooth and be able to finish up in just a few days. It's the last little leg of pipe that's on that. I went through the annual FOIA training. I have to do that. I'm the custodian of the records for the town. So code of Virginia requires that I have to do a train annually. So I did that this, I believe it was last week at some point. So I went through that. We are also in the process of writing a, an infectious disease preparedness and response plan and policy. The Virginia Department of Health, or I'm sorry, the Department of Labor and Industry came up with emergency, emergency temporary standards for COVID-19 protocols. Town of Bridgewater has already adopted a policy. Town of Lou Ray, I don't know that they've adopted theirs yet. They were supposed to, they were trying to have it complete as of last Friday. And so all the towns are working on those and they're all different kind of spots throughout. So the two that I have the copies of are very similar in wording as to the temporary standards that Department of Labor and Industry came out with. And basically it tells you how to, you know, if your employees are within seventy feet of each other, they should be doing this. If you have more than one employee riding in a vehicle, then they, they should have masks and so on. And it's just different things like that to address the, the health concerns related to the pandemic and to implement good protocols for keeping our employees and anyone that they come in contact with safe and healthy. And I believe that's all I have on public works. I'll have a more of an update on the parks. And the progress that's being made there when we get down to that, to that section then.
I really don't, we don't really, we have that anymore, AC. Why don't you just go ahead?
Yeah, that's right. We didn't put that on the, we didn't have that.
We have the abbreviated.
Abbreviated, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, there's been good progress. The, our maintenance crew has been doing really bang up job as always of progressing on the park plan. And I'm going to go ahead and throw some pictures up on the screen here. And these are, these are from today. So they've gotten into the pool house. They've started doing some renovations in the pool house. So this is the entrance to the, to the pool house and there used to be railing in there. You can see that the railing, the holes in the floor there, the railing is gone. The kitchen, they've kind of started clearing that out, took the counter down and cleaning things up. The bathroom started removing the old fixtures that needed to, that would have been one of the expenses that we decided to fix anything up. So that's what they're doing with the pool house. They've also been working in the park, the upper and lower part of the park. So we'll go to start up here at the top side. This is the site where the old pool house used to be. And you recall the maintenance crew demolished that themselves. And this is what the end product was after they leveled everything out, seeded it, and it looks really nice, very inviting, open space for right now. And on the master plan, there was a, one of the components was talking about putting a shelter in there with some bathrooms and some other amenities around there. So they've got the site in good condition so that they can progress on that when, when the time comes. This is the entrance that drive into the park off of Memorial Park Drive. And if you remember, there, there used to be two entrances, two cuts there that cars could go in and out and kind of, and so cars would come in, kind of parked all over the place in the middle of things. And you can see where the, the crew has cut up all the concrete and they've seeded and the grass is actually already coming back out really well. This is a path that would connect, has potential to connect into the the possible rail to trails project if that would ever get to that point. So you can see, we'll get back up here one, you can see how it's more squared off. We'll be able to delineate parking spots a lot easier this way. And instead of having people just kind of pulled in wherever, it maximizes, even though we've taken away some of the asphalt, it actually, in the end, the, the overall parking will increase. We'll add some asphalt on the other side for parking areas. But if we have on the parking spaces laid out, then it's obviously it's easier to maximize the space and get the cars in there that way. This is just another picture of that. We have received two bids on asphalting, resurfacing the parking areas there and putting in ask new asphalt for the new parking area. We're waiting on the third bid and we'll get that out to council as soon as we receive, as soon as we get that in. And then down in the park, you can see, this is the, you can see the drive coming down in with the fence there and the concrete or the asphalt right in front in the bottom part of the picture there. That's the walkway going up to the shelter. You can see where the crew has started working on the fitness path. So for right now, it goes from the existing asphalt walkway over to the dog park. And so that's going to be a really nice addition. That's the one thing that everybody kind of agreed upon when we started developing the plans and started taking input from everyone was that we needed walking trails and that was at both, both locations. So you can see that they started on that. And eventually, the way it's shown on the master plan and is, once the path gets put in, we'll have fitness stations along the way where people can stop, have different kinds of devices that they can do different types of exercises. So it would become a true fitness trail. And this is just another picture going on over towards the dog park. So if you haven't, if anybody hasn't been down to the park and down in that area, it's, you should really take a trip down there, especially now everything's really green after all the rain. So it's very, it's actually very pretty with the green and the shade and especially up on the top of the park is the entrance. It's very inviting now.
Yeah, we, I was doing that for a little bit, watching them. And group showed up with, I think it was five or six kayaks and complimented the crew on everything they've done. They've seen the changes and they just love it. So that was good to see.
Yeah.
I guess, I guess the other question Chris was talking about AC, he asked when he can start filling the old pool? Have we?
I talked to the park planner today, actually, and found out, they said, just need to bust up the bottom a little bit so that it does drain, but then start filling, start filling the pool in with compactable material and basically no big huge chunks of stuff. You want stuff that they can get in there and actually will compact down so that it doesn't settle for years and years and years. And then we cap it off with concrete and start on that part of the project when it's, when it's opportune.
That's something that's going to take a period of time to fill. So he was just wondering if he could start breaking some of it up. So it sounds like we can.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any, any other questions for AC? Or you got anything else, AC?
You were talking about the kayakers when I was down there today, taking some pictures. I saw people sitting on the swings where the old barbecue pit was. There were a couple of people had mountain bikes actually down on the rocky part next to the river and they were walking on the edge of the river. There was another person who was out there along the river fishing. So it's, it's nice to see the park being used and to be able to see the wide variety of uses that are going on in the park. I think it's, you know, with the plan that we have, that's, that was one of the main goals was to hit a very diverse group of people and give a large group of people lots of different opportunities to do different things.
Well, thank you, AC, and thank the guys. And if anyone hasn't seen it, please drop by. It's pretty neat looking. Okay, I guess we'll move, you're done, AC. We'll move down to JR. Why don't you update the council on what you've been doing during this pandemic?
Yes, sir. World goes round and round despite the pandemic.
Good news, good feel-good thing. I was on Facebook. Hopefully, most of y'all have seen it. We received a donation from a couple that lives in town, Frank and Alice Bruce. They're out a lot. A lot of people see them in the community and they're, they're super friendly, good people to talk to. And they donated money, I know, to the police department and also to the fire department after we did the Stay Strong Parade several weekends back. It's been almost, I guess, closer to two months, maybe at this point. But they donated money to us and we didn't want to just sit in an account and not do anything with it. We had hopes of remodeling the police department on this budget, but COVID kind of put the kibosh on that. So we decided to use the money to put a new sign up for the police department and gave that assignment to Jeremy Hope before he was promoted to sergeant. He worked with SignPro. They did a great job, came up with a good design, very durable. And I talked to Chris Kaufman and his guys and they did a fabulous job of getting the framework and the post up. It looks really good. It's very durable, hopefully to be there for a long time. So it was a good way for us to take the money the community members gave and give them something they can see their, their money going to use. So we needed the facelift to make it easier for people to find us and we really appreciate them donating that money for, for us to use for that. We had a new officer start recently. A lot of people know him because he's a local guy, CK, CK Ray. He started recently and he's been doing a great job, just like from John Street, from the first day. Great attitude, younger guy, that knows a lot of peers in the community. So that's been good. And of course, last council meeting, whenever promotions and you want to say that Sergeant Hook's done a great job so far. He's naturally fallen into that position. He's taken on a lot of, a lot of new responsibilities and learning a lot of new things. He's been very enthusiastic about it. So I've been trying to get him up to speed and, and learn a lot of I do as the administrator for the department. So they, all that knowledge is in kind of at one desk. So if something would happen to me, he's going to be able to handle it and we can share responsibility. That's been a good direction. And we've been fortunate to have good employees since my time here and we've had two of them retire. And I just, we've been very fortunate to replace them with other great officers. I just want to make a point of saying that the, the good that we do, the strength of our agency is, is in the quality of our officers. I appreciate every single one of them. Some budgetary things I just want to kind of put out to, to the council so we can talk about it in, in the coming months and in the coming year. When I came here, we agreed to get into a new in-car camera system and body armor camera system. And there's been a lot of, a lot of things happening in town over the years and we've been fortunate to have, have that video footage for those incidents for a lot of reasons. It's been very valuable to have that. If y'all can believe it, I've been here for five, well, it's August, more than five and a half years. So what, part of what that means is next year, our contract will be up with that camera company. So I'm going to go ahead and get some numbers from that particular company that we've been using Coban. And I'm also going to get numbers from a competing company, which is the most common company used in this area. And that's called Axon. And see what our financial options would be to either move forward with a new contract with Coban or to change companies to someone. I don't think it would be in our best interest to carry on without having a contract. I think that would leave us if it went bad, we would have to buy replacements and, and we just wouldn't have the support that we have while we're so my intention is to start working. I actually sent an email to Axon today, a touch base with Coban, get some numbers so we can discuss it. Whenever we start talking numbers again, as, as time allows, maybe the beginning of the year, not necessarily to inject into this budget for, but at least for the 2021, 22. That seems really strange to say. The other consideration in the upcoming budget is a company called LexiPol, L-E-X-I-P-O-L. They've been around for quite a few years. And this is a company that provides policy for law enforcement agencies across the country, including both Harrisonburg and Dayton Police Department down south of Harrisonburg. Both of them use LexiPol. So LexiPol, one of the big things they do is they provide policies to police departments. Their policies are vetted by subject matter experts and attorneys and are continually updated based on changes in the law, court decisions and so on. As we've seen in recent months, law enforcement is under extreme scrutiny. So LexiPol would help ensure that we're following the most up-to-date best practice for our industry and our profession. There's a setup fee and a recurring annual cost. So it's something to, to seriously consider, not to go into lightly. And I'll bring those future, the future financial meetings, exact proposals from, from them. They're kind of a single source deal. There's not really anybody else that provides that service. Another benefit of LexiPol is it provides a major step forward accreditation, which is something I think as a department, we should consider in the future. Anyone that's not familiar with accreditation, basically what accreditation does is it shows that your business, or in this case, your police department meets the requirements of your peers. So it's a best practice thing. So if someone were to come try to look at our agency and see whether we were doing everything we could to provide good service, the service legally that we should be providing, all those kinds of things. Being accredited is kind of having a stamp on the front door that says, we've already been vetted by our peers and by a professional organization without anybody having not that they couldn't, but it kind of sets that. The LexiPol would help us move in that direction. It would also be worthwhile for that. We'll discuss that later. And the last thing is actually money coming in instead of money going out. And that Sergeant Hook is applied for and received the DMV speed grant again this year. We did not have that during the current year. So that will actually start with the upcoming federal fiscal year in October. And he'll also be the grant administrator on that project. It's kind of the, he wrote the grant, received the grant. So that's all I got. We've, we've been dealing with calls for service and all that, but that's kind of normalized. And the guys and the citizens are dealing with COVID and people being home and kids not having school during the spring and everything. All that seems to be going okay.
And I guess that the email you sent out about the, I don't know the proper term, the ordinance on trespass or so forth, you'll just get that with Quentin or Mark and we'll have something for next meeting?
Yeah, Quentin and I have already touched base through email and a quick chat. So I think he's going to look over that and make sure that it's, that it's polished and he's comfortable with it so we can bring it up for the next one.
Okay, thank you. Good job. Good job as always. I'm proud of you guys. Anyone have any questions for the chief? Okay, we'll keep on going.
Let me, let me kind of follow up and tail on to what JR was talking about there with financial stuff. The town received, everybody's probably heard of the CARES Act. It's a way the federal government's been funneling money out to different localities and businesses and throughout the pandemic. So all the towns in Rockland County received a certain amount of money. The county came up with a formula on how to divide it up. So Timberill actually received $139,000 and some change to be used for, it's of CARES money to be used towards the pandemic, how we think it could be used. So the county set up, part of what they use theirs for, they set up a grant program and businesses could apply to that program. And they made their first round of awards recently and they're in, they're now taking applications for the second round of awards. And Ned had mentioned that in one of the previous council meetings. And so Sarah did a good job of trying to get the information out to the local businesses. And there were some local businesses, I know at least one in Timberville that was awarded a grant through that program and definitely qualified, were very well qualified for receiving the grant. So with the town's 139,000, it's up to us to administer that and to decide how to be spent if we choose to spend it. Certainly, it has to be directly COVID-related. So you know, the things like the sanitizers, masks, any kind of personal protective equipment that the police department or any other town departments would need to deal with the pandemic. There were, let's see, our the foyer that the maintenance crew built in the front office, which most of y'all haven't seen yet, that would qualify for the program. So we have some, we have used some of the money, especially like for the personal protective equipment, the hand sanitizers, the wipes, the disinfectants, things like that, that will definitely come out of that pot of money. Melinda took the, the money once we received it. She opened a completely separate account so that the bookkeeping part of it was much easier to take care of. We can show, you know, if we ever get audited on it, I don't know what extent the audits would be from the federal government. That's, sounds like it would be taking off a lot of resources as far as manpower to go through and audit all the different municipal entities in the country. But, you know, we don't want to just, our, our idea is not just to spend the money just because it's there, but if we do come up with a project, some kind of project that we think is worthwhile, we'll definitely come to the council and ask for approval to, especially as a big project. The money has to be spent by December 31st of this year. If it's, whatever's not spent, it's sent back. So if we use $5,000 of the CARES fund, of the CARES money, and that's all we spend, we will send the rest of it back. But I want the council to be aware that we do have that pot of money right now for projects that are related to the pandemic.
So you'll be looking into what we can do to help the local businesses like the county has?
Right. There's, there's different, different options. Certain things are, the county has more resources than the town does as far as staffing goes. So trying to administer a grant program is probably a little bit easier on the county's part or the city's part because they have the staff that can, that has the time to do that. Whereas our staff time is pretty, pretty well spoken for.
Any questions for AC?
AC, as you say, the town has already received the funding?
Yes, that's correct.
Sorry. Is it, it's not reflected on our treasures report?
We'll get, we'll get Melinda to update that. We can, then we can send out a copy of it now and then we'll have it updated for each month up and through December then. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just go ahead and add it on to minutes. I wouldn't, I wouldn't send out a new one. Just have Melinda add it on to minutes and so we'll have, we'll reflect what it is. So, so aware of it. You already said it was 139,000 semi dollars, correct?
Right, that's right.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, we're down to the Lot Line Division, American Legion Drive. Everybody received two copies, one copy showing all the little outbuildings all over the little outbuildings all over the property now, and then the new cleaner version not showing any outbuildings. And I know there's been some question, can you approve a lot line divi- provision or lot line, I guess it's division, right?
Division, right.
Lot line division, knowing there may be outbuildings that are too close to their property to meet the, the setback requirements. I'll, I'll leave that to you, A C. Call us when you know.
So, yeah, so Bob contacted me today, um, and had a really good catch on that, that, if the council were to approve it as is and the lot lines were put in, it would create non-conforming structures because they wouldn't meet the setbacks, uh, setback requirements. So my thought was, can the council approve it contingently? That the buildings are going to be removed, which is what, uh, Mr. Saverns said he's going to do with it. Um, he, he's going to remove all the buildings on the, uh, sides of the house, but he's going to move any of the buildings that are close to the property lines or on the property lines. He had plans to remove. And I went out and spoke with Mr. Saverns today and he confirmed that. I asked Quentin about it. Quentin and Quentin can jump in here anytime he likes, but I'd asked Quentin about my, my thought about approving it contingent on the, the buildings being removed. So if council were to approve it that way tonight, then I just hold on to the paperwork until, um, Mr. Saverns calls me. I go out and look at it. And if the buildings are removed, then I can sign off on the paperwork because you can't record the, the new lots until, um, we sign off, until I sign off on the paperwork.
So he can't technically do anything till you sign off on it?
Right. He's already, he's already pulled a permit for, um, lot six because, um, I'm allowed to, the, the zoning ordinance or our land development regulations allows multiple structures for multiple dwellings on the same lot as long as they're arranged so that they can be subdivided in the future. Right, right now he's got the existing house on lot one and he's going to, he's pulled a permit for a dwelling on lot six. So, you know, that, that's an easy window to show that, yeah, it can be subdivided.
Okay. So you can start building that one, period?
Right, exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, I said, the way that the planning commission approved it was they recommended approval so long as the division complies with the requirements of the L D Rs, the land development regulations. And right now it doesn't conform with the L D Rs. So you can do one of two things. You can table it until the next council meeting to confirm that all of the lots would meet the setback requirements after the buildings are removed. Or you could approve the division contingent on all of the lots meeting the setback requirements. Um, and then it would just be on, um, the zoning administrator on A Z, A C to confirm that everything's in compliance before he executes the document so that it would be recordable.
Okay. So everyone heard our two options. Um, any more questions for A C or?
My question would be if it's not, if the town does not sign the division, how could he proceed with building on a lot that doesn't exist legally?
We found the section here real quick, Bob. Um, it's seven oh two in the land development regulations and it's actually seven oh, uh, additional dwellings, additional dwellings on a single lot may be permitted provided that, additional dwellings conform to the minimum lot area, minimum lot width, maximum lot coverage and yard requirements. The arrangement of such additional dwellings is in such a manner so that if the lot or parcel of land is ever subdivided, no substandard lots are created. So he meets the setback requirements from the, right now he meets them on all sides. And he's not too close. So he has plenty of land there being where the, the existing houses oriented or located and where the new house on lot six is to be located. Um, there's no, there's nothing that says we couldn't approve a subdivision of that.
I guess I'm thinking along the lines of title work, uh, assuming he gets financing. Um, and maybe Quentin, uh, maybe you know the direction I might be heading. Seems that would be. I don't want to delay him, but again, based on what I understand the land development regulations require, you know, we, we can't approve, I guess we can approve it in, in, in theory, but these lots are not created until it's signed and recorded. So they would have to, a, a title person would have to, uh, again, do additional work to, to record the new lot six?
Well, I think from a title point of view, the way it shows now is it's all the one lot or the two lots. So, um, he, right now, he could start building the house that would be on the future lot six. It's just like he can do that by right, right now. He doesn't have to have the subdivision approved. It's just a matter of ensuring that all of those outbuildings get removed on the border of future lot one and lot two. So that there's no issue with setbacks concerning those outbuildings. My concern is you don't want to approve the subdivision and sign it now without the removal of those outbuildings because then you would have non-conforming lots. So you either provide a conditional approval that it's approved condition to those buildings being removed and all setbacks being met. Or you table it until he actually meets the setback requirements and then you approve it.
Ned, you had a question?
Yes, uh, previously, uh, it had been discussed that there was a pipe stem to access all of these lots and I don't see that on this plat. Is that, does that get shown on this plat? Does the access to these lots get shown or is that a separate issue?
Yeah, I think each, I think each lot will have its own access off of American Legion Drive.
So that's changed.
Um, I never, I never had, uh, I never saw any kind of drawings where it showed a pipe stem. It may have been discussed early, early on that he was talking about doing it that way, but, um,
V dot, um, there was some question about each lot having access out on the American Legion Drive.
I know before the rezoning took place, um, if it had been done as R five, that may have been a consideration because you would have had a street in the, it would have been a, a street into access all of them, but, um, that was the last, that was the only time I'd ever heard anything about that mentioned. Like I said, I never saw any drawings that showed, um, one road going in off of American Legion.
Okay.
Would that be more of, that would be more of a V dot question for the owner to get approval for entrances?
Right, exactly. Yeah, because V dot does all the entrance approvals.
Any more questions?
It only appears that lot one and lot two are affected by the buildings, although it doesn't, neither, none of the outbuildings are shown on the survey. I was a bit surprised that the, uh, that was not delineated. And I think the, uh, the side and, and rear for accessory buildings is five feet.
Right, exactly. Yeah, there, and the ones, the buildings between lot one and two, um, or along the property line of the proposed lot one and two there. When I was out talking to Mr. Saverns today, he said the surveyor said it was about fifteen feet from the center of the driveway and just kind of eyeballing it. Uh, but he doesn't have any stakes.
Right.
The surveyor didn't place any stakes or anything to delineate each of the lots yet. So, you know, if there was nothing to, there was nothing visually to go off of besides just kind of trying to eyeball from the center of the driveway. And from the center of the driveway, it looks like it would be very close. I don't know that there would be five feet at least to the, um, the building on lot one that is to the eastern, the easternmost building along the lot one, two proposed lot line, if that makes sense. It sounds really confusing.
Yeah, because, uh, it appears that most of the buildings could remain and meet setbacks.
Right, right, exactly. That, that, that one building out close to the entrance there, where it shows existing entrance, there's a building out close to that. And that's the one that really is the questionable one. Um, but his intentions are to take down.
Right.
Just take down the buildings.
Any more questions? It will need a motion. The two choices were either table it till, till I guess the buildings are removed and it's made conforming or make a motion, approve it contingent upon the buildings being removed and made conforming. I guess. Good enough, Quinn? Close enough? Okay.
So none of the pins have been set, A C, or that you're aware of?
No, he said none of the, she hadn't, the, um, surveyor hadn't said any of the pins yet. They were, I think they were looking to see if, I, I guess they were looking to see if approval of the, um, of the request was likely.
I mean, the lots meet the minimum requirements as far as square footage for an R two.
Absolutely. Yeah, your, your, your front, your frontages, your, uh, yeah, your frontages, everything meets the, meets the requirements of L D Rs.
So do we even have an accurate survey if there's no pins set?
Well, I know that the four corners, at least three of the corners, um, are accurate because they, there's an existing pin on the, one at the very, at the northernmost point. Then the one at the northwest corner, and I'm talking about the, the entire lot or the, all the property as a whole. And then at the southern point.
And maybe the pins have been set because if you look at the legend, it says iron pin set. Existing iron pin.
Right.
So, so possibly, yes, if the, the pins have been set.
But the four hundred ninety-six point two zero feet is accurate and it's simple math to divide it.
Yeah, that was off of, uh, that was off of previous, um, deed and plat, I believe.
Yeah. Okay, Ned, you, you had raised your hand?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve this, um, subdivision contingent on removal of the buildings that are non-conforming.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
So is that, does that mean then that the plat will not be signed by the town until after?
Correct. Yeah, I have to, I have to go out and see it. Property owner will call me and let me know when the buildings have been removed and, um, then I can, once I go out and physically observe it, then, then we can sign off on it.
Yeah. Any, any other discussion?
When the contingencies are removed, then it's approved.
Right.
When they're all conforming lots, it's removed, correct? Okay, let's go down the list. Carl?
Yes.
Yes, Bob?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yes.
Ned?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
And Juanita?
Yes.
Okay, um, I think that's the last thing on the agenda. Anyone else have anything to bring up before we adjourn?
I need Natalie and Bob to stay for a minute.
Okay. Okay, then this meeting is, um, adjourned?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Sharon, I think we're going to have to leave you on here and leave it public since it's three of you are meeting.
Oh, I need, yeah, sure. All I need to know, Natalie, could you water, uh, starting the thirtieth of this month going into the first?
Yeah, let me look. That should be okay.
Okay, that's fine. And Bob, can you water then the sixth of September that week?
He already signed off. I don't see him on here.
Did he?
Yeah, it's me, you, Juanita and, um, A C.
Okay, I'll call. Thank you. Thank, thank you Natalie. Thank you.
No problem. You have a good night.
Thank you all.
Thank you, A C.